Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Political Science Department of the University of Scranton. My name is Ann Domski, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, which means that we do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation by citizens in their government. We encourage you to join the League of Women Voters. Membership information can be found in your program, or you can go to our website, printed in your program, at www.lwvlackawanna.org. Please support our work by making a donation on your way out. Donations help us to cover costs, including recordings, so that the debates can be viewed by a wider audience. Volunteers will be at the back of the room, and they will be happy to accept your donation. ECTV is taping tonight's debate. This is not a live broadcast. The taped debate will be aired on Comcast 19 Local TV, so please check the ECTV schedule, which also can be found in your program. The taped debate will also be available on YouTube via links from our website late tonight. Please see your program for further information. Please join us for the Democratic Commissioner Candidate Debate tonight at 7:00 PM. Also, please see your program for other debates. If you missed one of these, you will be able to view the recording in its entirety. Before voting, you may want to study a sample ballot. A sample ballot can be found at the Lackawanna County Elections website. Note that the primary election on May 21st in the state of Pennsylvania is a closed primary, and only currently registered Democrats and Republicans may cast votes on the ballot that they will be handed for their respective party. This is not the case in the fall general election, when all voters, including independents and other parties, may vote for the candidates of their choice irrespective of the party. Also be aware that the deadline for registering to vote or declaring or changing a major party has already passed for the May primary. A few procedural items for the audience. Please turn off or silence your cellphones or other devices, and please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from the LWVLC event for campaign purposes. Any use of the media requires the express written approval of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. No excerpts or soundbites may be taken from tonight's discussion or debate. Tonight's debate is between the candidates for the Republican primary for the Lackawanna County Commissioner. Andrea Moe Ryan will serve as moderator for tonight's debate. Mrs. Moe Ryan is currently on the Board of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and a past president. Our moderator Andrea will introduce the candidates.
Thank you, Ann, and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the University of Scranton. We want to thank our partners, the University of Scranton and ECTV, for helping us this evening, and also want to thank our candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's event. As Ann said, this is a debate for candidates for the Republican Party for Lackawanna County Commissioner, and it will be a little bit longer. I know Ann said the next one would start at 7:00, but this is probably going to run until about quarter after 7:00, maybe a little bit later than that. Before we get started, I just have a couple of things to share with you. So there will be -- the candidates, first of all, are seated on stage alphabetically. There will be no opening statement. They will each be allowed a closing statement, two minutes per candidate. Questions are answered in a round robin style. We drew a name for who would give the first response to the question, and that goes to Lorraine. And we also drew for who would give the first closing statement, and that goes to Chris. Responses are timed. We ask them to finish their sentence, but respect the time limit so that we can move on to the next either answer or to the next question. We will allow two one-minute rebuttals per candidate for the entire night, and they can use them either together or one minute apart, however they choose. They just have to signal me for that. They don't get to hold them until the end and then make a longer closing statement. What I like to say is if you don't use them, they then belong to me, so that's my time. And no mobile or electronic devices are allowed, but paper notes for all of the candidates are quite fine. So with that, let us get started with tonight's candidates. So first, we have Chris Chirmack. Chris is a resident of Dalton. He was born in Clark Summit, and he and his wife Casey are the parents of four children and have one grandson. He's a graduate of Abington Heights High School and is a technician with Chirmack Services and held the position of General Manager, Joseph Chirmack Incorporated Suzuki Saab. His civic experience includes membership in the Clark Summit Fire Company and as a BLS and CPR instructor for the American Heart Association. He's also a National Ski Patrol member, Elk Mountain, an EMS volunteer for the Steamtown Marathon, and first responder, as well as for security at St. Benedict's Country Bazaar. And he has also served on the Clark Summit Planning Commission. Chris, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have current Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Lorraine is from Music and resides -- currently is from Music originally, currently resides in Old Forge. She's the mother of four adult children and grandmother of four. Lorraine graduated with a degree in nursing from Marywood University and is the owner and CEO of Lorimar Home Care and Staffing Services. She is serving her first term as Lackawanna County Commissioner. She was elected to the position in 2015. She founded the Scranton Tea Party and serves as President of the Marjorie Scranton Council of Republican Women, and she is also a Lackawanna State Committee Woman, active member of Lackawanna Republican Committee, and current Chairwoman of the 114th Legislative District Republican Committee. Lorraine, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
And finally, this evening, we have Mike Gianetta. Mike is a graduate of the University of Scranton, and he holds, from this institution, a BS in Political Science and History and a Master of Arts in History. He received his Juris Doctorate from Temple School of Law in Philadelphia. He has held the position of Scott Township Supervisor in the past, and also he is currently -- he's held it in the past and then on and off again, and he's still currently a Scott Township Supervisor. He served on the Lackawanna County Government Study Commission as well in 2013 and 14. He's a current member of UNICO, the Scranton Chapter, and his past civic experiences include Vice President Solicitor for Lackawanna County Council of Governments, Member of the Board of Directors of the American Red Cross, Vice President of Justice Volunteer Fire Company, and the Secretary of the Young Lawyers Division American Bar Association. He is currently an in-house trial attorney for Nationwide Insurance Company. He was born in Clark Summit, and he and his wife reside in Scott Township with their two children. Welcome. Thank you for being here with us this evening. So to get us started, the first question I'm going to ask, as I said, goes to Lorraine first, and the first question is somewhat personal. Are all of your local, city, school, and county, state, and federal taxes and fees paid up-to-date, including garbage fees? This question covers your personal obligations, as well as those for any business you may own or have a partial interest in. If you have outstanding delinquent balances, please briefly explain why and when you'll be paid up-to-date, and you have one minute to answer this question. Lorraine, it goes to you.
They're all paid.
All right. Then on to the next. The question goes to you, Mike.
The answer is yes, and this is an important question, and it's come up with appointments to county positions, city positions, where the backgrounds haven't been checked of hirees, and we have people that haven't paid their taxes, defaulted on federal loans, and haven't paid their garbage fees, and we need to do a better screening of those people to make sure that they do have their taxes and fees paid. It's important to set the example from the top down, and Chris and I will do that as Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question goes to you, please.
All my taxes or all my bills are paid. You know, I don't -- I can tell you, I don't like owing anybody money, so when things are due, they're paid. And as far as what Mike has said, I agree with him 100%. We're going to be vetting everyone that we hire in the Commissioner's Office and for the county.
Okay. So Mike, this next question goes to you, which kind of just gives you a longer opportunity to discuss what you were just discussing. Let's talk about hiring. If you are elected, what processes will you implement to ensure that those you hire into leadership positions are qualified for the role and have met their personal tax obligations? And you have two minutes for this question.
Thank you. One of the reasons that I decided to run was that there's a lack of transparency and openness and accountability with county government, and one of the problem areas is with hiring. There's too much hiring based on who you know, who you donated to, what politician you know. We need to stop that. We need to advertise all jobs. Chris and I are going to institute a policy where jobs and openings are advertised, they're posted, and we're going to start hiring based on merit, so that everybody has an opportunity to apply. And it shouldn't matter what Commissioner you know, what politician you know. The best and the brightest are the ones that should be hired. And as far as the hiring goes, the actual hiring, that should be done at public meetings. The Sunshine Act requires all official action must be taken at a public meeting. That's not being done now. It's being done behind closed doors, in secret, and it should be done at a public meeting. Each Commissioner should have the right to vote on those appointments, yes, no, whatever their position is, but that should be done at a public meeting, so that the public knows who is getting hired. That is the definition of openness and transparency, and Chris and I will do that when we're Commissioners.
Thank you. Mike, or I'm sorry, Chris, the question goes to you about hiring. How will you ensure that processes are implemented to hire into leadership positions people who are qualified for the role and have met their personal tax obligations?
Well, the good thing for me is I'm following Mike, and Mike and I have talked about this many times. He explained everything. I agree with him 100%. You know, at our business, when I'm interviewing people to hire, you hire the best of the best. You get what you pay for. So you're going to hire someone that's related to you or your cousin's brother? You know, that's what's been going on. It goes on at the prison. The prison's a disgrace. You know, some of the issues at the county, it comes down to, the people just don't know what they're doing. So absolutely, you know, you got to hire the right people. You got to hire people that know what they're doing, not who they know.
Okay, thank you. And Lorraine, the question goes to you, please.
Well, I'd just like to say, first of all, I resent the fact that someone's condemning employees of Lackawanna County that work very hard. There is a process in place. If my -- the gentlemen on each side of me did their research, they'd find that we do have a process. Each department head interviews the people, and they pick three out of the best that they interview, and that comes up to the Commissioner's Office. So I'm not sure. I think they listen to the comment section of the Scranton Times too often, because there is policies already in place. There is precedent on the Sunshine Law, and I'd be happy to share that with you after this is over, Mr. Gianetta. Sunshine Law reveals a clear distinction between policymaking decisions--
Lorraine, I'm sorry, but we can't hear you. Can you pull that mic a little bit closer? I apologize.
Sure. Actually, I tried earlier, and it wouldn't come up, so I'm going to have to lean forward on the table. Sunshine Law reveals a clear distinction between policymaking decisions which require openness in executive decisions regarding an individual character incompetence, which do not. Local government would be paralyzed by the need to make all hiring and firing of county employees at public meetings. We get hundreds of applications in the county on a weekly basis. There is something called the HR Department that goes through all of the applications we get to and sift through them. They hold them on file, so that when there are openings in the county, we can go back and pull from them, so we don't have to spend money to put ads in the paper, so that we can look for more people. We have qualified applicants, and we go through all the applications, and we go through with the department heads, and they go through all those applications. They pick three out of all. They bring them up to the Commissioners. Then we go through them again. We interview them again, and then we vote on them that way with the department head. The department head always has a say in who gets hired. So there is actual policy on that. And again, before you talk about employees without knowing the facts, I resent that. I work with these people. We have 1,100 employees at the county, and I resent the fact that you're calling them incompetent, or whatever the words you're using, because it's not true, and they do a very hard job, and they do a good job.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Chris. Chris, let's talk about reassessment. Excuse me. Lackawanna County has not completed a property reassessment since 1968, which was 51 years ago. At some point, it must be done. If not now, then when? What is your rationale and your plan? And you have two minutes.
Well, you know, over the past -- I started this journey a long time ago, almost two years ago, and I've traveled throughout the county, and I've talked to many of the residents. I go to council meetings, I go to supervisor meetings, all through the county, and I talk to everyone. You know, quite frankly, the people that I'm talking to are scared. They're afraid they're going to lose their house, their taxes are going to go through the roof. The problem is, you know, we're trying to fund these school districts anymore, and that's the big one, is the school tax. So we're trying to fund these things on the backs of the taxpayers, the property owners of Lackawanna County, and all the counties in Pennsylvania. It can't be done. We need -- property tax reform has to be done. We have to go up with new plans on how we're going to fund these multimillion-dollar school districts, and, you know, I'm not -- I'm going to vote no to initiate a reassessment.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you.
I think you asked for an answer as to -- could you ask that question again, please?
Sure. Lackawanna County has not completed a property reassessment since 1968, which was 51 years ago. At some point, it must be done. If not now, then when? What is your rationale and what is your plan?
Okay, I thought you asked for a plan. I thought Mr. Chirmack's plan was for reassessment. That's what he was quoted, that I remember, and, you know, that's the way I saw it, and I'm not sure what changed his mind, but actually, I'm happy he did. As far as myself, I'm completely opposed to reassessment. The county is not obligated to do a reassessment. The state is yet trying to find -- give us an unfunded mandate to do a reassessment. It's a flawed law. There's many flaws. What I've done to help the citizens in Lackawanna County with some of the issues with reassessment is to make sure that the permit process is complete, so that when we have complaints, the permits aren't handed into the assessor's office. We -- I implemented a program where I bring the -- our community relations people into the meetings, the public meetings, and they collect the permits from the municipalities and cities. And that's brought additional revenue in, because now we're actually going out and doing the reassessment on properties that are required to through their permit process. There are some that don't require reassessment, but some do. That's being taken care of. In regards to the complaints of unfair appeals, I feel it's a legitimate complaint. So what I had done is asked our department that we put all of the appeals that are being done online for all of you to see. So you can go on lackawannacounty.org and see everyone that's gone in for an appeal, and it's done usually every two weeks. They have hearings. You could see who went in, who asked, what they were at, what it was changed to, and you can go back in the archives and see that as well. So I think there's things that we can implement at the county to make it a more fair process, but as far as the law being changed, that's a state issue, and the state needs to get on the ball and fix that flawed law. We cannot have one person, not one person, lose their home to a tax. That's unacceptable, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you.
Thank you. I am opposed to any reassessment of county property taxes. And the reason is, I think it is a huge waste of money to spend millions of dollars, and all you're basically doing is shifting around what people currently pay. You don't bring any more money in. It's like moving the chairs around on the deck of a ship, and you're spending millions of dollars to do that. And at some point, after it's done, some taxes are going to stay the same, others will go up, others will go down. The million-dollar question is whose taxes go up? And I'm convinced the taxes are going to go up on people that have bought their homes in the '60s, '70s, and '80s. They paid $25,000, $15,000, $25,000 for them, and now they're worth $150,000 or $200,000. The tax assessment of those houses are going up, and who are those people? Those people are now senior citizens, they're retired, and they're on fixed incomes. They're going to be hit very hard with a reassessment that's being done after 50 years, and Chris and I will not initiate any reassessment of property taxes. He did mention that the real problem is that we need tax reform. There's too much emphasis on property taxes to fund municipalities and school districts, and that's what really needs addressing. We have no power or control over that. The legislature is required to act on that. They're not doing their job, and they need to address property tax reform. As far as assessment, we're not required to do it under the law, and the law does need to be changed by Harrisburg on how they do reassessments, and it will be up to them, not the Commissioners, to decide what the uniform change would be.
Okay. Lorraine, I'm sorry, Lorraine first and then Chris. Go on.
Yeah, well, I'm glad they both agree with me at this point. I'd like to know what changed their minds, or especially Chris.
I asked the questions. Chris?
Sorry.
So I'd like to respond to that. You know, I want to make one thing perfectly clear. I don't want to raise anybody's taxes, nobody's. In fact, you know, Mike and I, I think with our due diligence, we're going to be able to lower taxes in Lackawanna County. And you know what's really funny to me? April 28, 2015, at this venue, same question, Ms. Cummings, and I quote, "was for reassessment." So--
Okay.
I would like to address that. I have never been in favor of a reassessment of county taxes. I don't know why some people are under that presumption. Nobody ever asked me before, because they didn't care what a Scott Township Supervisor thought, but I'm not in favor of it. And what Chris just mentioned, you know, we've all followed Ms. Cummings over the past four years, railing against reassessment, and basically, the only reason why reassessment is an issue is because she and Pat O'Malley have used this as a political weapon to stir people up and scare them that their property taxes are going up. And if you go back and you look at the video from the debate from four years ago, and she was asked what her position was on property tax reassessment, she clearly stated she was for it. Go back, look at it, review that tape.
Thank you. Lorraine, the next question goes to you, and I want to talk about the prison system. So problems at the Lackawanna County Prison have been in the news many times for more than a decade. Looking forward to the future, what can county Commissioners do to improve the prison and prevent the problems that seem to keep coming up? And you have two minutes.
That's a pretty broad question. There's multiple things that need to be improved, but, you know, I mean, it is a prison, so, you know, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at. Can you be more specific?
The question is to you.
Just in general?
You respond how you want to.
Okay, well, as far as some of the issues that have come up, every area of the prison now has cameras, so that was an issue that was necessary and did happen. A lot of the issues that came up recently have been from years ago. Recent issues that have come up were still pending, and, you know, I think that the best thing that we could do is privatize the prison. That's what I would like to do. However, I did look into it, had it vetted, and because of union contracts and wages, it's just an impossible thing to get. So it's just as issues come up, we'll have to have -- we'll have to deal with them, and that's what we've been doing. When we had issues come up that we felt had a conflict, we handed it up to the AG's office, and we did the right thing. And I did the right thing when I voted to do that. So I -- that's all we can do, is as issues arise, deal with them, and move on.
Okay, thank you. Mike, the question goes to you.
Well, it seems like we've been hearing about the corruption at the prison for the past 15 years, and nothing really seems to happen to clean it up over there. I think the biggest problem over at the prison is the hiring practice. People get hired to work at the prison based on who they know, what politicians they're friends with, and who they donated to. And when you're not looking at the best qualified people putting them in there, you're going to end up having problems. We need to streamline and hire the best people for the prison and not worry about who's related to somebody and who donated to somebody, and we're not getting the best people in there, and that's what's causing these problems. If we concentrated on the hiring practices, we would not have the problems like we do at the prison. And I'm convinced that that is the main problem, and, you know, you look at the money that we're throwing away at the prison, defending these cases, hiring all these lawyers. We spent $175,000 to look through and sift through emails that the county had to turn over. It's really a total unnecessary waste of money that we're spending on attorneys because of the prison. So we need to really straighten it out. We need to perhaps bring somebody from the outside in to review the operations of the prison, to find out what other problems there are besides the hiring practices. But I'm convinced it's the hiring practices and the people that are getting hired there. You know, when you have the prison as the source of patronage for the Commissioners, this is what you get, and we need to get away from that. We need to hire the best, the brightest, and that will go a long way to stop the practices and the abuses going on at the prison now.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question goes to you.
I've been hearing about these problems at the prisons for as long as I can remember, and, you know, we have a lot of great people there, as we do in the county, but unfortunately, we have a few bad apples, and they're the ones that cause all the problems. You know, they're running their own little business in the prison. The stuff that goes on there is despicable. Hiring the right people is the key thing. So it's very simple. Got to hire the right people. You got to vet these people. You got to do background checks on these people. You can't just hire friends and family.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this next question goes to you, and let's talk about the pension fund. Is the county's pension fund appropriately funded, and should the budget always include a pension payment?
I'm not on the inside, so I can't tell you what is going on as far as whether it's adequately funded. What I will say, though, is that the county should be funding the pension every year, as should all municipalities and as the state should. We've seen years ago, the state got into a lot of problems because they stopped contributing to SARS, which is the state employee's retirement fund, thinking that as the stock market went up, they didn't -- and it was making -- the pension fund for the state was making so much money, the state did not have to make contributions. Then unfortunately, what happens is that the stock market goes down, and then they're short. Whether the stock market's up, whether the stock market's down, the county should be making payments to the employee's pension. To me, it seems like a red flag that there's a potential problem there when the county is not making pension payments. And they should make the payments. The county has made a commitment to the employees of the county that when they retire, that there will be funds there to pay their pension, and the county should make sure that the system is solvent and it is not a hostage to the market at the time whether it's going up or down. So in short, we should be making payments to the pension plan every year, whether or not the stock market is up, as it is now, or whether it's down, as it's most likely to be, because the whole system of the stock market is cyclical. So to keep things constant, there should be contributions every year.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, the question to you. Is the county's pension fund appropriately funded, and should the budget always include a pension payment?
You know, I can't -- that's one question I can't answer, if it's funded appropriately. However, it needs to be funded, and that's certainly something that Mike and I are going to look at. We're going to look at all the departments and wherever all our money is going. So like Mike said, we have to fund it. We can't rely on the stock market, so yes, it needs to be funded.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question, the same question to you.
Yes, our pension is 86% funded right now, and it's one of the highest fundings. We have a great credit rating. We've been doing well, and we've been budgeting well, and, you know, I feel like I rose between two thorns up here, so I guess that's going to be the rest of the debate, which I'm fine with. Bring it on. So we're at the county. We're doing okay, and we did fund our pension this year, so.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the next question goes to you first, and I want to move on to the environment, something that obviously, in beautiful Lackawanna County, we're very concerned about. In view of the federal government's failure to acknowledge and address climate change, states, including Pennsylvania, as well as counties and cities in Pennsylvania, are taking the lead. How can Lackawanna County reduce its carbon footprint and move to the future with a commitment to low-carbon energy?
Well, I think we're doing a pretty good job here in Lackawanna County. You know, all my life, I hunt, I fish, you know, I enjoy the outdoors, my whole family There's a lot of rules in place. Most of these businesses that I can see follow these rules. So, you know, what else can be done? You know, technology changes every day, so we follow the technology. If there's scrubbers or things that need to be put on these emission stacks, then that's what needs to be done. I think we're doing a good job. I know there's always room to do better. I am not an expert in that. I am not an expert in that kind of environment, but I can learn and look into what would be better for the county.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the same question goes to you. What can Lackawanna County do to reduce its carbon footprint and move to the future with a commitment to low-carbon energy?
Well, I think that we do a really good job now. In the Conservation District, I sit on their board, and you know, we have a great staff there under Jerry Stiles' leadership. And you know, I try to always make sure that their programs are highlighted at the commissioner's office, and we'll continue to do so, and I'll continue to work with them on all the projects that they're working on. And you know, I think that with our farmers, some of the things that were interesting to me, and I wanted to make sure I talked to you about this, because last debate, I said I wasn't really sure how much they did in regards to that. We do things like a cover crop with the farmers, which was interesting to learn about for me, and where they seed. We seed the farms after their harvest and put grass on it so runoff doesn't go through, which is very... And we have a lot of seminars on some of the things that they're doing. And you know, our farmers have really done a tremendous job in our county, and I just want to make sure that they're recognized for all the hard work that they've done to try and improve the Chesapeake and keep up with all the regulations that have been hurled at them. Very proud of them, and I'm very proud of the Conservation District in Lackawanna County. And please make sure you go and check out their website for the Conservation District. They do many, many programs that you'd be surprised about, including rain barrel projects and things like that, where they give out rain barrels for... We're always talking about runoff now. The big thing is, you know, looking at what's coming in the future. And that is something that we really have to be prepared for. And the rain tax is a big fat no for me, just so if anybody's questioning that.
Well, that'll be the next question.
Okay, well, just making sure I got that in there, because that's not anything I'm in favor of, so. But we do many things at the Conservation District that are helpful to our citizens, and so very proud of all of them on our board. Thank you.
And Mike, the question goes to you. How can Lackawanna County reduce its carbon footprint and move to the future with a commitment to low-carbon energy?
Probably the most important thing the county can do, and the state can do, is to encourage and push for more use of natural gas for heating homes, providing energy for businesses. The carbon footprint of the United States has dropped dramatically, regardless of what some people on the left think. The use of natural gas as opposed to oil and coal has substantially lowered the amount of carbon going into the atmosphere. And it's something that the county should encourage, so that homeowners could switch their homes to heat them with natural gas. I myself have oil, which is a killer, and I wish the gas line ran up my street, because tomorrow I put a gas furnace in. I heat my house with wood pellets. I have several wood pellet stoves in my house, but I would love to have natural gas. We have a plant here in Lackawanna County, and part of the problem is that the gas company is not running lines and expanding lines. They're making homeowners pay to install the line to get to their homes. The county and the state should be making it easier and provide incentives for the gas industry to expand their distribution system and add lines, so that more people could take advantage of the gas that's being produced here in Pennsylvania to heat their own homes, as opposed to it being shipped out of the state and somebody else gets to take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you. As promised, Lorraine, the next question goes to you first, and let's talk about stormwater. So the EPA is enforcing a mandate that municipalities control stormwater runoff that ultimately pollutes the Chesapeake Bay. The fee being put on homes, schools, and businesses is being referred to as a rain tax. Scranton has already hired environmental engineers who recommend a stormwater authority be formed to manage the new tax. What is your position on the unfunded mandate necessitating a rain tax and the creation of a regional authority?
I'm not in favor of regional authority, because they're going to look at the county to do that, and I'm just not going to do that. We've already been asked about it in the public, and I'm on the record as opposed to it. It's just yet another unfunded mandate always coming down. If the federal government wants something done, then they're just going to have to provide the money, and you know, I'll sign on to them providing that money and any petition that's out there.
Okay. Mike, the question goes to you, please.
Thank you. I am opposed to any type of rain tax or stormwater management fee. This is a prime example of big government sticking its nose and telling local governments and the people what they have to do. We do not need a rain tax. We do not need a stormwater management fee. Being a supervisor in Scott Township, we had sewers pushed on us and mandated by the Commonwealth. It was a very huge financial burden on the people, and we could not sustain having to pay this additional tax. Everything needs to be done, and we really need help from Washington to put a stop to this. The EPA is out of control, dictating mandates for something that we don't need. Some bureaucrats sitting down in Harrisburg, but Washington, deciding that this is a problem. We need to decide here locally whether it's a problem and address it. We don't need Washington dictating to us what the problem is and what we should be doing. So, and if there's any push for a regional countywide authority, I'm totally against that. We don't need more big government. We don't need more agencies forcing another tax on Lackawanna County.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, the question to you, please.
That is something that, you know, I hear a lot of crazy things, and that's probably one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard of as a rain tax. I am 100% against that. You know, I know where I live in the Abingtons, I know that they've stated that they will not impose a rain tax on the residents, so I am against it. I think it's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this next question goes to you first. Let's touch now on economic development. Imagine that you've been asked to speak with a business or company that is considering relocating to the county. What would you tell them about the county to sell it to them, and what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
I believe that the commissioners need to be a partner with the Chamber of Commerce and SLIPCO in attracting and selling our county and selling our people as an ideal area to locate. Back in the early 1990s, as a supervisor, I voted for the Scott Technology Park, which was developed to bring industry and jobs into our township and Lackawanna County, and I was always available. Whenever the Chamber of Commerce called and said, "We have a potential tenant, we have some business people that would like to meet with the board," I would drop everything and go and meet with them, and sell the area, sell the people, sell Scott Township, and tell them why this area is such a great, great area. You know, I left, well, I went to school here at the University of Scranton, but then I went off to law school in Philadelphia. And I chose to come back here because of, basically because of the people. I love the people here, my family's here, my friends are here. This is a great place to live and raise a family, and we're close to Philadelphia, we're close to New York, between two and three hours in each direction. There's no reason why this area can't be growing, and the potential is great. We should be like the Lehigh Valley here. And what's kept us down, the politicians have kept us down here. That's the only difference. We have a great system, interstate highways that converge right here in northeastern Pennsylvania. We should be attracting more business. I will be available 24/7 with the chamber, anyone that wants to come in, whether it's Amazon, "Why didn't they apply? Why weren't they interested in Lackawanna County? Why would they want to go to New York?" Lackawanna County, northeastern Pennsylvania is a much better place, and I would make myself available. Chris would make himself available. The Board of Commissioners, the whole Board of Commissioners, should be a team with the Chamber of Commerce and SLIPCO in attracting and working with them to attract business.
Thank you. And Chris, the question to you. What would you tell someone thinking about relocating here about the county to sell it to them, and what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
Well, the first thing I'm going to sell is myself. You know, I've been in business a long time, third generation in our family dealership. And you know, we're dealing with customers on a day-to-day basis, selling cars. You got to sell yourself first. So right there tells me that changes need to start at the top. You know, we need a professional and a common sense approach to this. These people come in, you know, that's what they're looking at. They read scandals in the newspaper, they see stuff on the news, and you know, it turns them off. You know, we have hardworking people here. There's nothing that we can't do here in northeastern Pennsylvania. We have the interstate systems, 80, 81, 83. You can get anywhere from here. We have the KC Highway, it's prime real estate, ready to go. There's a lot that can be done. Lehigh Valley, that's an hour away. And just about two months ago, it was brought up to me. The Lehigh Valley was ranked in the top five in economic development in the nation. It's an hour away from here. There's no reason that we can't be in the top. I don't care, we don't have to be the top five, we don't have to be the bottom five either. There's a long way, a lot of work we can do, there's a long way to go, and we can do it here. We have the people, and we have the energy to do it. Mike and I are going to make it happen.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you. What would you tell someone thinking about relocating here to sell the county to them, and what promises, if any, would you be willing to make to get them to relocate?
Well, the biggest promise is homeownership and low taxes. I mean, that's why they would come here, good education. School districts need to be looked at, and I know there are some in the area that have problems, but we have other school districts that are wonderful and aren't in the paper every day. So you know, I mean, we talk about that, but we forget about all the good things that we have in our county, and that's the people themselves. And the fact that with President Trump's economy right now, our airport is at record highs. Every single year, they've broken records every single year for unemployment. And you know, we're doing, our economy is doing so well that now our unemployment rate is the lowest it's been. And you know, I'm so proud of the work that our president has done and the way he's shifted our economy, because that helps us here in Lackawanna County. The problem we're having now is that we can't find the employees to fill the positions that are open. They haven't been trained in the job market. So what we do is try and get those employees through CTC. We have Virginia-Toronto who's doing an excellent job with workforce development and training so many new areas for our citizens and our young people, to try and get them interested in STEM and research, science, math. And we have programs at Lackawanna College, we just were over there for the new occupational therapy program. When you have jobs available, when you hear that they can't fill all the job openings are, they'll come here then. And we do have that now, and I credit that to the good work of those in Lackawanna County, the small business owners that opened up and provided venues for jobs. And I think we're just going to continue to grow and continue to make America great again.
Okay, thank you. Chris, this next question will go to you first. What do you feel about the overall importance and impact of arts, culture, and education to the overall well-being of the citizens of Lackawanna County? How should the county commissioners, if they should, support those types of initiatives?
Well, they should support it, and we will support it. You know, that helps develop a well-rounded individual with our children. We have the Everheart Museum here, we have a lot of nice things going on, there's always functions going on in the city. You know, it's all part of it. But the county definitely has to be involved in that, and we have to support that.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you. How do you feel about the importance and the impact of arts, culture, and education to the overall well-being of the citizens of Lackawanna County?
I think we have a great arts and culture program, and that's why I took the money that was unfairly being distributed to the library when they already had a tax dedicated to them, and I gave it back to the arts department. So now they have $168,000 more to spend, because it's no longer being given to the library and a speakers bureau that was paying $30 million... Let me think. $30,000 out for one speaker for one hour. That program has now ended because of what I implemented, and now the arts and culture department has gained $168,000 more dollars. Unfortunately, what was reported was a little twisted, but that is the fact. Now, as far as the one mil tax, you know, I think that we can incorporate that into our general fund, because we are doing well at the county, and I think that we can get at least one mil back to the citizens of Lackawanna County, and that's what I've been trying to work on. So they kind of misconstrued what that message actually was. It wasn't getting rid of an arts program. I actually gave them more money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you.
Support for the arts and culture is very important. And Lackawanna County and local governments have an obligation to help improve quality of life here in our county. If we want to attract new business here, one of the things we have to show and tell people is what other things we have in the area that they can participate in and relax and enjoy doing. Local festivals, local fairs. You know, after 5:00 and when work is finished, there needs to be something in the area to go and relax with your children and your family with. And that's important. And you know, I find it interesting, I know there's a program that the county has, you can apply and get $500 grants for local municipalities, for fairs and festivals. And you know, I've looked at the minutes of various meetings, and I've seen that Commissioner Cummings voted no on various grants. Greenfield Township Centennial, Glenburn requested a grant, Waverly requested a grant for their fair. It's only $500. I don't understand why someone would be against those grants. It's minimal, and it does help the quality of life for these communities, and I would support requests like that.
I need to respond to that. Any grants that come from the LSA money is what I'm assuming you're referring to. That's a local share account, and that's gambling money. And the citizens of Pennsylvania voted for that money to go towards their homes. And that's the only reason I vote against any of those programs. There's probably multiple programs that he could cite that you might agree with, and I would agree with as well. However, when you're using the gambling revenue that was supposed to be utilized to help property owners on their bills, their property taxes, and instead of it going to the property taxes and the homeowners that voted on it, it goes to some other program to have a picnic. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that. We have other funding available that we can utilize, and I think there's other avenues we can use to provide that funding. It doesn't need to come out of the gambling revenue. And that's why I voted no on some of those, and I'm sure that's what he's referring to, but I'm not sure what... Is that exactly where you got the LSA funding? Because that's the only thing I would...
Yes.
Okay. And that's why, so the public knows, I want any money that's supposed to be going to help you pay your taxes to go to you. And that's where it was supposed to be dedicated to. That's gambling revenue that should have gone to you.
Okay, thank you. So Lorraine, the next question goes to you first. So Lackawanna County is a college county. We have eight colleges and universities within the boundaries of Lackawanna County, and that's not even talking about what's down in Luzerne County and closer to us as well. And yet, we talk constantly about brain drain, and we talk about students coming here from New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and leaving, and our own students, our own local people coming here to college and then leaving for higher-paying jobs or for careers elsewhere. What can you, as a Lackawanna County Commissioner, do to help us prevent, slow down the brain drain and get people to stay here?
I mean, what I'm thinking is happening is they're in classes that don't meet what the economy requires, and that's what we've been working on. So for instance, when you have electricians that are required, which we do, take the airport, for instance. Who would ever think that we were short on pilots and short on mechanics at the airport for helicopters? But we are. So if anybody out there is interested, you know, make sure that you bring your kids up to look at the airports, so that we can get them involved in jobs like this. These are good-paying positions that we need to be educating our children on, and that's what we've been working on throughout our... I know I've been working on it with the chamber, with the different colleges. When they implement programs, we try to make sure that we're there to educate the school districts on them and go into the school districts talking about that and, you know, making them aware to get them excited. We have a new program through the workforce development where Virginia-Toronto came in, and actually, the kids in the grade school can actually go on their phone and click on the app, and they'll be connected right into the classroom, so the student can actually tell them exactly what the program is about and what they're learning, and kind of get them excited about these different fields that are available. And that seems to be where that disconnect was. We need to retrain the workforce that we have here, and we're working on that now, and we are doing it at Lackawanna County, and I'll continue to do that as your county commissioner.
Thank you. Mike, the question goes to you. How can we stop... How can we stop or slow down brain drain?
We have brain drain because we don't have the jobs here. We don't have the positions here for our children and grandchildren to apply for so that they can stay here. That's why they go to the Lehigh Valley, that's why they go to Philadelphia. We need to do a better job here of attracting a wide variety of positions, so that when they get out of the University of Scranton or Marywood University or Lackawanna College, there's a position here that they could actually apply for. And the county, and I know the township, and I've supported it as a supervisor, should do everything it can to bring business here. And business is, business wants to know what you're going to do for them. They're not going to move here because of the goodness of their heart. They want to know financially, what do you, what can you give me? What can you do for me? They want to see tax abatements. They want to see tax reductions, programs through the state such as Keystone Opportunity Zones and the LERTA program. These are things that, tools that the county and municipalities have and should utilize. And the state needs to come up with more economic development programs, because this is why business will move here. The goal should be bringing the company in and providing the jobs. If you have a tax abatement for a few years, I believe that's well worth it. If you have the position that so someone's son or daughter can apply. We need to do whatever we can to get the business to come in, and we need to, we need to utilize the tax incentives that are available, and the state needs to push for more and better economic development. The brain drain, again, is occurring in our county because the positions aren't here, and that's why our children and grandchildren are leaving.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, the question goes to you. How can we stop brain drain?
Well, I think we have a lot of great schools in this area. My wife teaches at Keystone College. We love the school. It's not far from our house. She's been there a long time. The students are excellent. She enjoys her job, and they do learn the correct things, what they need to learn in life. Some of them move on, some of them stay around. You know, I have a son that went to the University of Pittsburgh. He's a civil engineer. He works here in Dunmore, so we get to see him all the time. I have another son that's going to be an eye doctor, and not soon enough, because I can hardly see my notes as I'm sitting here. And we hope that he's going to come home and live here. So what it's going to take, it's going to take Mike and I to grow this economy, get bigger businesses in here, get better-paying jobs in here, so the kids have places to go. So I'm 100% for that. I want my kids to stay here. I want to make this Lackawanna County a better place for my family and for all the families here.
Okay, thank you. Mike, this question goes to you next. So we hosted a debate here last night for Scranton City Council candidates, and one of the questions that came up was, or one of the concerns that we've heard a lot about as we were trying to research what we should ask, was blight, that that's a big problem in Scranton. So my question for you is, how big a problem is blight in Lackawanna County, and what can the county commissioners do to help alleviate that problem?
Well, I think the biggest blight problem is probably in the city of Scranton. But I don't believe that the taxpayer should be on the hook to be ripping down properties and cleaning up properties wherever they are. We need to go after the homeowners themselves and drag them into court and fine them and pursue enforcement. But I'm not in favor of the municipality, whether it's Scranton or other municipalities, having to take hard-earned tax dollars to go in and rip down and clean up properties where that should be done by the homeowner. And so there should be more aggressive enforcement by the municipality, and it shouldn't be the burden of the taxpayers to go in and rip. And it's very expensive to go and tear down a property and clean it up. And I know the neighbors would like to see that, but, you know, there's only, resources are finite that a municipality has, and it, you know, those dollars have to go to Rhodes Police, you know, essential functions. And it's really not an essential function to be ripping down dilapidated houses at the cost of the taxpayer. And the municipality's got zoning enforcement and can file citations, and they have the ability to file criminal citations with the magistrate, and they should be aggressively doing that, going after the homeowners, and particularly the slum lords that have properties here in the city. They live in New York. We've read about that guy that's a millionaire lawyer and owns all of these houses here in the Hill Section here in Scranton, and shows up in an old dilapidated car, and that's really a disgrace. And the city should be going after him, using the criminal powers of the zoning to get him to clean up his properties.
Okay, thank you. Chris, the question to you. How big a problem is blight in Lackawanna County, and what can the county commissioners do about it?
Well, it is, you know, I drive around a lot. I see, I see, I see what goes on, and I, we have an older population here. This area is, has been here for a long time. Blight is a problem everywhere throughout our country. We have to work hard, and like Mike said, with these out-of-state property owners, I mean, that, right there, and those guys, they don't even care what's going on. We've got to pay attention to it, find these people, and, you know, the bottom line is, at the end of the day, it's still going to be the responsibility of the city or the county. I mean, you know, you know, maybe some funds have to be put aside, but it's a problem throughout the country. It's not just here.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, the question to you. Is blight a problem for the county, and what can county commissioners do about it?
Well, blight is a problem because of the bad economy. We came out of, and now we're in a good economy, so we're starting to see improvement. And there is a land bank that we have at the county now that has paid for some of the issues that the city has had, and we've purchased 100 of the homes and sold them off. And I do, there's one program I like on the land bank. That's the side lot program, where they have, you know, a property that's just sitting there empty, and they give half of that property between the two property owners. But as far as blight is concerned, that's the municipality's responsibility. It's not the county's responsibility. And, you know, if the land bank can help them in some way, you know, that would be one of the areas we can help them, but we can't generate funds towards them. That's not our, that's not our responsibility. And the other issue is, is that we want to make sure people stay in their homes so that they do want to fix them up. And the last thing we want to do is try and add on more fees, fines, and liens on a property owner that's already struggling to meet the bills. You know, we want to try and work with them and try and help them. And that's what the county is best at, is serving their residents. And we do have some programs that can help out if they are having a hard time, and they should always reach out to the county commissioners and see if there's a program we have that can help them if they're, you know, if they need some repairs done. We have multiple programs that we can help them out with. And if we don't, SLHDA does, we have weatherization programs to try and help. And I would encourage anyone that has questions on that to please make sure you call Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office and find out what they are, because there's multiple programs we have that can help you out to try and help with some of that blight that might be occurring because of poor finances. But I certainly wouldn't want to go after them financially, that they've suffered enough.
Okay, thank you. Chris, this next question will go to you. We'll do a one-minute response on this, because I think it should be pretty quick. Currently, the Board of Commissioners conducts its open public meetings on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. This time is not necessarily the most convenient for county residents who might want to participate in their county government. Would you advocate for a more citizen-friendly Board of Commissioners meeting time?
Definitely. I try to go to them whenever I can. And, you know, I'm like every other person around here. I have to work. So there's definitely room to change there, whether, you know, you travel around at different council meetings and have it just before theirs, but definitely that needs to be changed. It can't just be set and stuck downtown where you can't even get a parking spot, you can't get in, you know, it's ridiculous. So yes, it needs to be changed.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you. Would you advocate for a more citizen-friendly Board of Commissioners meeting time?
I'm assuming you're not aware of the fact that we have evening meetings. I implemented that the first month I was in office, that we have evening meetings throughout the county, every quarter, plus we have eight during the fall. So just so, if you're not aware, we have, I have, that was one of the first things I did when I got in office, was implement evening meetings, and they aren't just done in the city of Scranton, they're done throughout the county. Our next one is going to be, I believe it's May 28th, and that's in Dixon City. And we do, that is one of the programs that I promised to give the citizens, and I did, and it's done. So thank you for giving the time to explain that to those that weren't aware of it.
And Mike, the question to you.
For the past 25 years, as I'm being involved as a supervisor in Scott Township, we've always had our meetings at night, at 7:00. People, most people work during the day. They can't make meetings during the day, and it is definitely more convenient to have the meetings at night. I mean, I've gone to some of them at night. I'm not sure that more people come out because they're at night than they do in the day. But I certainly don't have a problem with having them at night. Again, I've been doing that for the past 25 years. What I would like to see is that the meetings be changed, and we get rid of the dog and pony show with the cameras and the awards and the certificates, and change them to a business meeting. And more people would probably come out if they didn't have to sit through an hour of photographs and with the cameras, and you got right down to business. And I would, Chris and I are going to do that. We're going to streamline commissioner meetings and get rid of the public relations and the dog and pony show before business has started.
Okay, thank you. And we have time for one last question before we move on to our closing statements. And Lorraine, this question would go to you first. Can you describe what it means to be a public servant acting ethically? What policy changes, if any, would you recommend to ensure the county government is run as ethically as possible?
I have to just say that, you know, to claim that a dog and pony show is to recognize small businesses across this county as a dog and pony show, that would be taken away is not anything that I would ever say. And recognizing good works by citizens across our county is not anything that I feel is a dog and pony show. But as far as ethics are concerned, we have an ethics policy at Lackawanna County. We follow it to the best as our ability, and I would stick to it. I've read it. I try and abide by it every single day, and that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, the question goes to you, please.
The Board of Commissioners needs to set an example from the top down, and all department heads being at the top also. Yes, we do have an ethics policy here in Lackawanna County, but it needs to be strengthened, and it needs to be changed. And many of you have seen the controversy over the past month regarding gift baskets that were given out by the commissioners to fundraisers and the baseball tickets.
Thank you. Are you seriously going to go to a gift basket?
Let me finish my remark, please.
Lorraine, I'm sorry, but that's, this is my time.
And the point I want to make is that, and it's, the gift basket, there's nothing wrong with the gift basket, there's nothing wrong with the tickets, but the problem is that taxpayer money, taxpayer-funded items in these gift baskets and the tickets are being given by, under the name of the commissioners. And when you see the basket, it's being, it's being given by the individual commissioners with their names there. And my feeling is that unless the commissioner is paying for that out of their own pocket, their name should not be on it, because the taxpayers of Lackawanna County are paying for that, and the policy should be amended and changed. And Chris will do that, Chris and I will do that in January, that there will be no donations of gift baskets or baseball tickets or anything else with the names of the individual commissioners as the, people donating these items, because it makes it look like the commissioners paid for them themselves. That's not a good example to set. The people that pay for them are the taxpayers of the county, and they are the ones that should be given the credit on these items, and we would stop that.
And Chris, the last question goes last to you.
That's something that means a lot to me. I've dedicated my life to public service. I was very young, I joined the Clarkstown Fire Company. I've been in that fire company for a long, long time. I've been a first responder for close to 40 years. I don't even know, maybe it's over, I don't even want to count. I've been on the Elk Mountain Ski Patrol as a volunteer, 23 years. I'm an instructor for National Ski Patrol. I'm an instructor for American Heart, volunteer. I'm an instructor for Commonwealth Health Emergency Services. I do security at St. Benedict's Church Picnic, and it doesn't sound like much, but they deal with a lot of money there. I've been doing that for over 20 years. You know, the Steamtown Marathon, I've been patrolling Mile 12 by the Windsor Inn for over 20 years to make sure the runners are safe, and that's what I enjoy. You know, I tried all my life to be an upstanding citizen and devote my free time, which I don't have much of anymore, to helping others. And I can tell you, you know, when I, when I jumped out of the back of an ambulance and there's somebody tied up in a car, wrapped around a tree, or I'm skiing at Elk Mountain and I get called to the scene, I can tell you, there is nothing more gratifying than helping somebody as a team on what could possibly be the worst day of their life.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the time that we have this evening for the Republican candidates for Lackawanna County Commissioner. We will have time for closing statements from each one of them. Before we get to that, I just want to invite everyone in the audience. We are a volunteer group, the League of Women Voters. We invite you to join us. If these types of events are something that you want us to continue to do, we also invite you to make a contribution to us on the way out the door, and we will have people at the, at the door. And after this debate concludes, and we have probably a three-minute break, we'll be starting the next debate with the candidates for Democratic County Commissioner, so we invite you to stay and hear all of them as well. With that, I will invite Chris Schirmack, who drew the first number, to give his closing statement. Chris, you have two minutes.
Thank you. And first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. This was a great venue. And I want to thank everybody for taking their time and coming tonight. I especially want to thank my wife and my family for their constant support for me, for this, throughout my journey here. I'd like to also say happy birthday to my father today. You know, my decision for, thank you. You're taking this, that's coming out of my two minutes.
That's right.
My decision to run for county commissioner, that came from values I've learned throughout my life. Public service and teamwork, as you know, that's all very important to me. You know, I simply want to make Lackawanna County a better place for my family and for all the families here. I'll give you just three reasons why I want to run for county commissioner, or I am running. Teamwork. You know, our current leadership is dysfunctional. They're not working efficiently. Mike and I are going to bring a professional, common sense approach to county government. Number two, public service. I just explained that. I dedicated my life to public service. I'm not going to go into that anymore. You know, as a first responder, we don't run from a bad situation. We run headfirst right into it, and that's what we plan to do here for the Commissioner's Office. Number three, very important, is economic development. You know, with my years of business experience, I'm going to work hard to run our county responsibly and efficiently, and Mike and I are going to work hard with the Chamber of Commerce to bring better-paying jobs here in Lackawanna County. You know, I want our children to stay here and make a better life for themselves here. You know, I spent the last year traveling around this county, and I've talked to many of our residents, and I can tell you, one thing is perfectly clear to me, and they believe we're headed in the wrong direction. You know, I'm not doing this for a job. I'm doing this to make a difference. And you know what? We can do better. So on May 21st, I'm going to ask for two votes, one for Schirmack and one for Janetta. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lorraine Cummings, you have your two minutes.
Thank you. Well, when I first ran for this office, I ran because I was ticked off at the government for what they did to my business. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that they didn't hurt any other businesses. And, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about here is creating jobs. Well, government doesn't create jobs. A government gets in the way of job makers. I want to make sure that that ended, and that ended when I became a commissioner. I believe that spotlighting small businesses of those people that are here in our county that have the ingenuity to create their own product or their own service and run with that and make a living and provide jobs for other people is what is so important to those of us in our community. I applaud them, and I always make sure that they're spotlighted, and I always try and make sure that anyone that starts a small business in our area is recognized for how important it is for our area to create the very economic development that Chris is referring to. That's something that I've always maintained as a small business owner myself, and as someone who has a small business and has been, I will be celebrating my 20-year anniversary this year. I feel that I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to do that as a woman business owner. My... My job in the county has provided me with the ability to bring more transparency to the county by putting more information online for you, by going across the county, doing informational sessions, not only on reassessment, but many issues that have come before our board, to make sure that we're reaching out to the public to let them know what services are provided by the county, because many don't know what they are, and to make sure that the environment here is a no-tax-increase environment, a budget that's met, a surplus that's met, and to maintain that. And on May 21st, I do ask for your vote for Commissioner, and I would say, whatever one of these gentlemen you put up on that ticket with me, we would have to work together to maintain the surplus we have and the tax-free... I'm getting cut off, sorry. And no tax increase that we have provided for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lorraine Cummings. And Mike, Jeanetta, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I would again like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight's debate, the University of Scranton, and the Political Science Department. It's a special place in my heart for the Political Science Department, since I spent four years here, sitting in classes on local government, state government, national government, and now I have the chance to be sitting here at a debate. It's quite humbling. I'd like to thank my wife and my two little kids for putting up with me running for Commissioner and not being home. As hard as it is on the candidates, it's even harder on them, because my wife's there with two small children, and I'd like to thank them. I'd like to point out that four months ago, running for Commissioner wasn't on my radar. I have a good job as a lawyer. I do very well, and I don't need this position. But as many of you know, I was elected to the Lackawanna County Government Study Commission back in 2013, and we concluded that county government was dysfunctional. We probably didn't need a study commission to reach that conclusion. We probably already knew that. And we made a recommendation to change the form of our county government, which the voters rejected, and I accept. They wanted to keep the three-commissioned form of government, and as we've seen over the past four years, it's only gotten more dysfunctional. We have two commissioners that don't speak with each other. Nothing gets done, and that needs to change. And what's our option? Well, we need to elect better-qualified people. And I believe that I have the qualifications as a former Deputy Attorney General, a municipal background in municipal service as a township supervisor, that can bring that experience to Lackawanna County. One of the important areas that I have always worked in was openness and transparency in county government, and that's going to be my main drive, along with Chris, when we are elected in November. The changes that need to be made can only be made with a new team of two majority commissioners, and Chris and I are dedicated to making the changes.
Thank you.
There will be changes made, I guarantee it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the League, I want to thank all of our candidates for being here this evening. We appreciate your commitment to democracy. We invite all of you, again, to stay for the next one. Don't forget to vote on May 21st. It's an important primary election, and get all your friends and relatives to vote as well. Thanks so much for being here tonight. The Forests.